Underwriting support for this program is provided by the Eureka Teachers Association's School Board Liaison, Philip Middlemiss. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll reconvene in the open session of the meeting of January 18th. And we have a report out.
Turn your mic on.
On item C1, it will move to an action item in open session. Item C2 was not discussed. Item C3, no actions to report, and we'll continue with closed session after the open session. Item 4, C4 was not discussed.
Okay, so we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. Wendy will lead us.
Wait, wait. Pledge of Allegiance is being led by adult education today?
Oh.
I will not leave. Excuse me. Okay, so I'd like to call our Pledge of Allegiance leader. Oh, come on up. Come on up.
Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This is Michael Lancaster. He's one of our concurrent students of adult education, and he's going to talk in just a second. I realize we only have five minutes. We're going to blow through this as fast as we can. I'll start by introducing myself. I'm Sandi Phillips. I'm the Director of Adult Education, and I would like to start by thanking you for allowing us this opportunity to show the faces of the people of adult education. Adult education does a great work in Humboldt County, but for the most part, it is done quietly and behind the scenes. So we wanted to take a second to remind you of the vastness of this program and the people that it serves. So I want to start by telling you, in the 2010-11 year, the Eureka Adult School home site at Winship served 1,377 unduplicated students. 347 of those were gaining valuable career and technical education training. We've got 22 earned their GED, 10 earned their high school diploma. 76 concurrent high school students were given the opportunity for credit recovery so that they could graduate from their home school on time. And 84 students last year earned their CNA license. And about, you know, just as a side note, about 80 percent of those students have been hired already and are working in the nursing field. Most of those who were not hired are not hired because they are at CR continuing their nursing education. We also have another site. We have a, we serve students at the Humboldt County Jail, and in the 2010-11 year, we served 492 unduplicated learners at the jail site. We are, of those students, 17 earn their GEDs, and we've got two high school diplomas out of the jail last year, and we expect that to grow exponentially this year with the implementation of distance learning there. So I just gave you numbers, but attached to every single number is a story. And so I want to give you just a second to see a couple of the faces and the stories attached to the impact that Eureka Adult School has in our county. I wish we had more time, but I'm going to make it really quick. I made them all promise to keep it super, super brief. And we're going to start, in fact, why don't I have you guys all come just stand up here so that we can do it kind of quickly? We've got Michael Lancaster, Zachary Roberts, Andrea Russell, Jimmy Reynolds, and Arlene Mitchell. If you can all come forward. And we're going to start with Michael Lancaster, and then I'll just let you go down the road. All right.
Hello, my name is Michael Lancaster. I'm a Chief Petty Officer in the Eureka High NJRO TC, and without this program, I would not be able to graduate and enlist on the Marine, in the Marine Corps on time, which I leave in August. I graduate in June, and I'd be leaving eight months later than my leave date now. So it helps.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Andrea Russell.
Since I started coming to the Eureka Adult School, I have improved my reading and my math. I have learned reading strategies and have gained a much bigger vocabulary. Sorry. I really like coming to school because the teachers are very helpful. If it was, weren't for coming to, to school and getting more self-confidence and learning how to talk confidently, I wouldn't have been able to do a phone interview for a job. I blew them away, and I got the job. The classes tests have also helped me. I, oh wait, yeah. The classes tests have also helped me. I have shown significant growth besides attending the reading and vocabulary class. I work in the Learning Center on some computer vocabulary and math and language arts. In addition to academic skills, I have learned some social skills, etiquette, cooperation, and cross-cultural understanding. I feel like a more confident and better person because of the Eureka Adult School. Thank you.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. Jimmy Reynolds, my name. Thank you so much for adult education. It allowed me to better my education, and I went on to CR to go to the Police Academy, but decided to become a contractor instead. But it's helped me a lot. I'm able to stay in this area, and I'm very busy, so I plead with you to really look at this program. It's done a lot of good in this area. Thank you very much.
Hello, thanks for this opportunity. My name is Zachary Roberts, and I'm here to pledge my support and appreciation for the Eureka Adult School CNA program. It's a great program because it provides practical job training. It's a gateway to a career in the health care. It fulfills a need in the community, and it develops the individual caregiver. The program provides practical job training. As a Eureka Adult School student, we're not only being taught skills, but we're given experience applying them throughout the training. Because the program is connected to the long-term care facilities in the area, it's not just school. It's both practical and immediately applicable learning. Personally, the program is a direct pathway to a CNA position with Eureka Rehabilitation and Wellness Center. Yet the program is not only job training. This CNA program is an open door to the nursing field. Many of the RNs and LVNs we're learning from started their careers with the CNA position. We're not only receiving support from them, but also encouraged to continue on in the field. Personally, the Eureka Adult School CNA program is preparation for the LVN program at College of the Redwoods. The program also fills a great need in the community. We need more CNAs in our local area in order to provide care for our aging population. We need this program to keep these jobs local. Currently, CNA positions are being filled on a short-term basis by people from out of the area. These are jobs local people can have with the right training. I believe this program is the right training. Personally, I've had a little, I have had little luck finding employment in the construction industry as the construction industry falters, and I'm considered overqualified for other entry-level positions. This has not been the case as a CNA. Finally, I'd like to say the program is great because as our instructor says, it develops the connection between the heart of a caring person and the mind of a nursing assistant. Our teacher, Angela Beeson, conveys confidence, competence, and enthusiasm, and through a short six weeks, she's transferred those qualities to her students. I've progressed from a person who wants to be of service to others to an integral part of a caring team or with skills to assist in wellness and rehabilitation, the wellness and rehabilitation of our residents. Thank you.
My name is Arlene, and I'd like to share some of the classes that I attended at Eureka Adult School. This is where I learned keyboarding and how to operate a computer many years ago. I am now with the Employment Training Department Program, which suggested further computer classes for me. The last school year, I took them at CR, but really needed a QuickBooks class, which was not and still is not offered at CR. So this year, they referred me to the Computer Business Training at Eureka Adult School, where it is offered. Also attending are several other referrals. I really needed some direction and updating in my business skills, which I am now receiving with Carolyn Joyce, my teacher. I am very grateful for the Eureka Adult School as it offers both personal and professional enrichment. I thank the district for their continued support in the adult program. Thank you.
That's it. I just want to give our adult ed supporters a chance to raise their hand and acknowledge that you're here to support adult education if you're here. All right. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll now open the public hearing.
Can we excuse our?
Oh, yes.
Only if they have homework. Have a good night. Thank you for coming.
You have to go all the way down to your people with control.
Well, not to, no, when we go to.
We'll have to go through.
No. Yes.
Okay, so, okay, so I'm opening the public hearing to receive public comment on the Eureka Teachers Association interest for negotiating changes to the collective bargaining agreement between the Eureka City Schools Governing Board and Eureka Teachers Association. And are there any public comments?
I just received this, Philip Middlemiss, Eureka High School Board Liaison. I just received this, this afternoon, and I don't think anyone from our board has gotten it in time enough to respond to it. So I would like to have this placed on another one for feedback.
It's been posted for 10 days at all the sites, legally posted 10 days prior to the public hearing. And it's been on the website too.
Is this going to be the only opportunity that we're going to have to respond to this? Because there's a lot of information that needs to be exchanged from ETA to the board. And I'm, I'm personally surprised by that it was going to be appearing on this, this agenda. I didn't know it. So I'm obviously not the only one.
Didn't know.
And the two of us are pretty involved in what's going on.
Can I ask a clarifying question? What is it that you?
Well, you wanted public hearing, right?
Right.
Okay.
Because this was provided by the bargaining chair to the district for a public hearing.
Okay.
There are two different public hearings. One is the.
So we are going to have another public hearing?
No, no. There's, first one is for the ETA proposal.
Right.
And then the second public hearing immediately follows, and that's for the district's sunshine.
Are any decisions going to be made at this point?
Yeah.
All right.
Just to.
I just got caught unawares with this, so.
What this is, is it allows us to begin negotiations if the board does the public hearing and then moves to accept both parties' proposals. Until that occurs, negotiations can't begin.
All right.
So it's part of the negotiation process.
I jumped the gun. I apologize.
You have.
Any other comments? In that case, I'll close the public, that public hearing. The next public hearing is for the Eureka Governing Board to receive public comment on the Eureka City School District Governing Board proposed changes to the collective bargaining agreement between the Governing Board and the Eureka Teachers Association for a three-year period to run from July 1, 2012 through June 30, 2015. Any comments for this public hearing? Hearing none. I'll close that public hearing. And our third public hearing is in accordance with SB X34, the Governing Board of Eureka City School District will hold a public hearing to seek input and take testimony from the public in regard to the proposed transfer of certain categorical funds. Funds will be transferred to the unrestricted general fund offsetting revenue limit reductions. Funds will maintain existing programs supporting student achievement. Any comments on this public hearing? So I will close that public hearing as well. And so we don't have a vote or anything at this point. Okay. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
I don't have any. Did you want to? Oh. Consent? Yeah, there may be some consent agenda items that are going to have some questions and comments about, and move, some may move to consent or action items. When we get to that.
Okay. Information. Student representatives report senior projects. And I don't see any student representatives, okay. Superintendent's report.
And my superintendent's report tonight will give the board some updates with regards to what's occurring within the state of California in terms of budget. There's kind of two things. I'm going to summarize some information for the board. One has to do with, as the board knows, every time you submit a budget to the county, they have to review it and give some feedback back to the board and to the district. So I'm going to start off with just summarizing some of the highlights from that letter that we received from Rick Hanger from the County Office of Education. Mainly, I want to let the board know that the first interim report was received by them in a timely manner, and we acknowledge, and they acknowledge that the governing board has issued a qualified certification of the district's financial status. They do concur with our qualified certification and then offered us some observations and comments. Some of those comments are going to be reflected in what I'm going to discuss next, so I'm going to kind of cut to some salient points. They do want to encourage the efforts of the district to, to make some adjustments with our ongoing deficit, which they projected, and we have projected as much as $2,560. This deficit calculation does not include the impact of the projected reduction in transportation of $193,797 due to the state's mid-year trigger reductions. So they're acknowledging, which we also acknowledged in our first interim, that we have ongoing structural deficits in our budget. They also noted the projected deficits are, they go out for the years 2013, 2000, oh, I see a typo, 2012, 2013, 2013, 2014. They do also indicate that we are keeping the minimum reserve. They do indicate that cash management provides challenges that require reserves greater than the state minimum. As we know, the state minimum typically has been 3%, but given the cash issues, the recommendation is for districts to maintain a much higher reserve than that 3%. Overall, based on the level of structural deficit and the requirement to maintain a positive cash position, it is important that the district take a proactive approach to mitigate any ongoing deficits. And then, of course, we have to plan, develop a fiscal stability plan to be included in our 1112 second interim report that we'll submit to the County Office of Ed, which addresses both the ongoing deficit and the potential loss of transportation. As we know, that is an ongoing, currently an ongoing loss in funding for every district in the state of California. In addition, they advise the district to be extremely cautious during these uncertain times and encourage us to develop multiple contingency plans that address any additional changes to revenue or cash deferral assumptions such as trigger language that may occur during the budget period. I do want to let you know, so that was kind of a brief summary of what their report back to the board based on our presenting to them our first interim. So what I also want to share with the board is sort of a 2012, 2011, 12 budget update. I also have some copies for anybody in the audience that might want them that are at the end of the table. And basically, in terms of revenue, as we planned prudently last year to, for anticipated triggers, as a result of those triggers not being pulled to the degree that they could have been, we do expect to increase our revenue limit by approximately $900,000. However, there's a decrease of approximately $191,000 for home-to-school transportation. That was already an immediate cut. We do get a grant for program improvement because we are in PI status as a district, which will add $150,000 in new revenue. However, that is a categorical revenue, so that, as we know, has restrictions in terms of how we can utilize it. As well, we have received information that we have from the state that is a decrease of $60,000 in our economic impact aid, which impacted all of our schools to some degree. Expenditures, we continue to see an increase in special ed expenditures. We continue to see an increase in premise and maintenance and operation expenditures. As we know, we have some pretty significant facility issues that we're addressing. Enrollment update, the district enrollment at Seabeds in October 6, 2011 was 3,842. Enrollment on January 6, 2012 was 3,779, a decrease of 63 students. The largest drop is at Eureka High School with enrollment declining by 31 from 1,307 to 1,276. P1 attendance is 3,628, yielding a Seabeds to P1 attendance ratio of 94.4%, which is in line with historical trending. It does still indicate that the district is in a declining enrollment situation overall. As we've noted previously, we've got some, some good numbers in some of our very primary grades, but overall, we are still seeing a declining enrollment situation. The governor did his proposal a couple of weeks ago, I guess now, and I thought the board would want to know what those impact of potential triggers might mean to us as a district. So the department of, so this would happen next year. The Department of Finance estimates that the potential 2012, 2013 trigger cuts is about $370 per ADA or per student for Eureka City Schools with a projected ADA of 3,591 for the 1112 school year. This equates to approximately $1.325 million reduction in funding. So in addition, you know, to the structural deficit we've already identified, we now have to plan for some anticipated or potential triggers that could incur next year in December that could approximate another $1.3 million. So that is sort of my budget update to the board, and that is my superintendent's report for tonight. It's not good, necessarily good news.
Okay, board members' reports. Susan?
When I went and visited the grade schools a few weeks ago, Jan Schmidt had invited me to come back to Lafayette when they had their PBIS training rollout, and that's the Positive Behavior Intervention and Support. And it's the new behavior modification, well, not behavior modification, but I guess that's what it's called, system that they're going to be using at the grade schools, and it was really interesting. And I, I mean, it looks like a really great program, and it'd be really good to see it in all the schools.
Fran?
First, I attended on the seventh, the Boardmanship Workshop at the County Office of Education, and Molly McGee Hewitt, as usual, is absolutely outstanding. You can go in there and sit for all day, and it feels like you've been there for 20 minutes. She just is absolutely marvelous. So anyone, even just a layperson who would like to go, she's well worth, it was an excellent, excellent day. I also attended a parent meeting at Zane, and this is the first in a series of parent meetings. They're going to have one every month. It wasn't a huge turnout, but they gave a presentation on their bullying program that they, that they're installing there. They're only going to use it this year, and then next year, they're going to actually go into the program that they have in all the elementary schools. And is that not going into the high school too, or some similar to that?
It's similar.
It'll be carried over into the high school. That's what I thought. But the people who were there were very, very pleased, and they had shown the video to the students, and they had students there that told of their reaction to it. Most of the girls cried during it, but, and I almost did too, because it was, it was really, really excellent. And I understand they're already seeing some improvement in behaviors, and I'm really, really happy to see that. So I think maybe that, if, if it continues through elementary school into the middle school and into the high school, I think a lot of this bullying will hopefully subside, and we won't have the picking on the students that we've had.
Okay, Hank?
I also attended the workshop at the County Office. Excellent workshop for new board members. The learning curve for those of us that came on the board a short time ago is steep. So learning a lot. Secondly, I wanted to request a report from the Eureka High School principal on the service learning and how those hours are being recorded. So if we could have that possibly in the next meeting?
I could give you a report to it right now, if that's appropriate. I don't.
Just.
No, it's not, because it's not an agenda item. I probably.
I'd like to get a report on that.
Okay.
That's all?
Wendy?
I also attended the Boardmanship Training at Humboldt County Office of Ed, and Molly McGee is an incredible speaker. Good to have a refresher course. Keep me in line, let me, keep me headed in the right direction. Also, with John, attended the city-county meeting with a number of city councilmen, city council members, and county supervisors. Part of my, my new job as, what is it called that I'm doing?
The liaison.
Liaison for the board. And that's going to be very interesting, and I hope that we can develop a better communication between city and county agencies with Eureka City Schools. Don't ever get a nail file stuck in the lining of your purse when you go through the metal detectors. It's just all bad. It's all bad. And, well, that's about it.
Like Wendy said, I also attended the city-county meeting, and the city-county meeting has two school board members, two city council members, and two supervisors, along with some staff from the county and city probation and planning departments and a couple of other people. I didn't even know what they did. And it was very interesting, but it's mostly just to increase communication between all the entities in Eureka. Okay, so moving to public comment on non-agenda items. This is the time designated on the agenda when members of the public may bring before the board matters that are not listed on the agenda. Legally, no action or significant discussion can take place about a matter not listed on the agenda. Therefore, board members and district staff members usually will not. Therefore, board members and district staff members usually will not respond to public comments. As printed on the agenda, individual speakers will have three minutes to address the board. Each topic is limited to twenty minutes total. And I have one green sheet from Brian Little.
Thank you very much. Brian Little with, I'm the lead petitioner for Redwood Coast Montessori, and I just wanted to check in. Um, I'm assuming everybody received a copy of the letter that I sent out dated the twelfth, informing you that we did pull our petition in light of, um, some of the comments and findings that, uh, that your staff provided us, um, with, with, for the petition. We wanted to do a very careful and thoughtful job in responding to those items and making changes where appropriate to the petition. Um, you know, really try to, to bring it up to the, to the level we all want it to be, and to, to really, you know, produce a, a first-class document and ultimately a reflection of a, of a first-class program that we intend to, uh, to, to, to run. So I just wanted to let you know that that's the reason why we pulled the petition, is to address those issues with, you know, care and consideration, and we absolutely will be providing you with another petition. Um, and we look forward to seeing you again soon and, um, and telling you more about our program. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other public comments on non-agenda items? Hearing none, we'll move to the consent calendar. And?
I'd like to pull K-28 for discussion.
Okay.
Discussion action.
And I believe we need to pull K-18 and K-19 for discussion action.
And I believe we need to pull K-18 and K-19 for discussion action.
Okay, so with the consent. Any others? With the consent calendar with items eighteen, nineteen, and twenty-eight temporarily polled, do I hear a motion on the remaining items?
Move to approve.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, and none opposed. Item K-18, student expulsion, student eleven dash twelve dash zero zero five, resolution eleven dash twelve dash zero one five.
Move for approval.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, and hearing no other discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And any opposed? That motion is carried. Item nineteen, student expulsion, student eleven dash twelve dash zero zero six, resolution eleven dash twelve dash zero one seven.
Move for approval.
Second.
Been a motion and a second, hearing no discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those aye. All those opposed, hearing none, that motion is carried. Item number twenty-eight, categorical fund transfers and uses in accordance with SBX-34.
My question's, um, direct to Mr. Ziegler. I'm a little unclear of the, the process on what, if it's a state mandate that we have to take all of these funds and, um, put them into the general fund because they're categorical funds. And specifically, my, my biggest concern has to do with, um, deferred maintenance. We have huge maintenance issues, and I don't want the deferred maintenance going into the general fund if we're not going to use it for maintenance. So could you help me with this a little bit?
Sure. Understood. Um, so just generally, yes, it is a state mandate, so with the, the flexibility or with the categorical funds formally now being able to be flexed in on an annual basis, it's recommended that, um, we go through this process and detail both the funds that we're bringing in and how we're, um, deploying those funds. So generally, uh, three point five million dollars in, in overall funds that are being flexed in, and they're going into two categories of resources, if you will. Uh, one is resource zero zero one nine encompasses some of the categorical, the flexed, um, the flexed dollars coming in, and then the O-two series, um, houses the rest of them. Those are both within the general fund, and any, um, any resource that starts with a zero or a one, as in zero zero one nine or zero two three oh, for instance, is unrestricted. So it does give us the ability to bring those funds in. Specifically with deferred maintenance, uh, in that whole three point five million dollars worth of funds, there was a hundred and forty-eight thousand that would have been allocated and restricted to deferred maintenance in the old days. That is no longer a requirement. Um, also in the past, it was required that three percent of your budget go to, to ongoing, uh, ongoing deferred maintenance. With flexibility, that number's been reduced to one percent. So one percent for us is about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We are actually budgeted for a little over one point one million with deferred maintenance. So irrespective of the fact that we only have to put three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, um, per mandate towards deferred maintenance, um, we've elected our need as such that it's a little over one point one million that's actually being utilized in deferred maintenance at this point.
And it is a requirement that we go through this procedure and sweep all these funds into the general fund.
Yes, yes. If, if we want to bring them in and make them unrestricted, so to speak, um, it gives us the flexibility then to determine how we want to use those funds going forward. Maybe a different case in point would be, um, art and music. For instance, there's sixty thousand dollars there. That isn't necessarily being used for art and music, but can support both that program and other programs throughout the district.
But do we have to do this? Do we have to sweep it in?
Um, if we want to have the flexibility to use it, yes.
Well, but what if we wanted, if you're using art and music, what if we wanted to keep the art and music there? In order to keep, use the, it for art and music, would we have to sweep it in and then pull it back out again?
We, we would designate that particular amount towards, uh, towards that particular, uh, that particular resource, art and music.
Okay, but we'd have to do.
So we would still, we would still bring it in.
We'd still have to do it.
That's correct.
Okay, that's what I need to know.
Yeah.
Okay. That, that helps me a lot. Thank you, Paul. Uh, I'll move for approval of K-28.
Second.
There's been a motion on item K-28. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, vote, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. None opposed, so the motion is carried. Item L-33, receipt of the 2010, 2011 Independent Audit Report.
So, so we have received formerly the, um, 2010, 2011 Audit Report, um, uh, from Crow Horwath, formerly Perry Smith, and, uh, they go through basically our operations, uh, they provide us their opinion letter, and, um, they point out, uh, some of the areas where they have, um, some particular concerns. For the most part, what they've said in here is that, um, they don't have any major concerns regarding our ongoing operations. Um, they have highlighted a few findings, um, that we will need to take corrective action for. Um, the two that I would point out, one would be our federal interest, interest reporting. Um, we had not been, um, uh, doing that correctly or as timely as they would like to see. We have a real issue there, though, in that we don't get the interest, our effective interest rate from the County of Humboldt until well after the point that the dollars are supposed to be remitted. Um, and every district in Humboldt County has that same, that same issue. So we're continuing to talk to Crow Horwath about that. They under, uh, understand the situation, but I think are continuing to point it out. Um, we've also had conversation with California Department of Education on it, um, and they basically have said, "We don't want you to do an estimate. We want you to remit what is the, the exact and proper amount." Um, and without that effective interest rate, we're not able to do it. By way of example, we just got this week the effective interest rate for, um, the quarter from July through September for 2011. So that will be an ongoing concern. Um, as soon as we get that interest rate, we, uh, the county runs cash, um, cash balance reports for us. We do the rest of the calculation and get our, our interest set off, sent off as appropriate. So that's what we're able to do on that one.
Is there any way of getting that caught up with the county or getting them to do it quicker, or the department just sits this way and every year we're going to get the same thing?
It's been fairly traditional, three to four months behind the fact.
Pretty silly.
Um, the other finding that we had, um, that I'd bring to your attention, I'm going to try to get there very quickly.
The monies from the activities.
Um, this had to do with the, um, uh, the kindergarten continuance, and, uh, we had, when, when we're holding somebody back, as I understand, we go through a process, there's a form that need to be filled, needs to be filled out. One of the forms was filled out improperly in the prior year, and irrespective of what it says in here, there will be a fiscal impact to it. Um, the report says that we're a basic aid district, and we're not. We brought that to their attention, that unfortunately didn't get fixed in the final report, but it will have a fiscal impact of about sixty-five hundred dollars. It's a, a little less than a, a full FTE that we'll have to do an amended ADA report and therefore give up that, um, that funding relative to that, that point nine four that we were found to have improperly classified. So those are the two big things that came out of the report. That being said, all in all, I think it's a, a very good report. Um, they do a very thorough job, but I'll also say that they're excellent to work with, and we appreciate the fact that we can discuss items before they make it to the final report and, um, are, are able to resolve issues even as they're here on, uh, here on site.
Any other questions? And we need a motion to, um, receive and approve the 2010, 2011 Audit Report.
I so move.
I'll second it.
There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. None opposed, so motion carries. L-34, receipt of the 2010, 2011 Measure S and Measure T Audit Report.
Um, also an annual requirement, uh, Crow Horwath comes in and, and, uh, does an audit of our Measure S and Measure T bonds. For the most part, they're making sure that our financial records are in order, which they are, um, and that also that the bond funds are being spent according to what was originally submitted to the voters, uh, as the, the bond was going out for its, um, uh, for the original issuance. And, um, again, they've gone through and they've been able to track where those expenditures occurred and, and agree that we are expending those funds appropriately and in the manner that the voters had approved.
Any questions or discussion?
I did have a question, and these are, um, we have bond funds left, and these are up-to-date of spent monies. It doesn't cover what's left, and it, it's supposed to identify areas that we had promised to deal with in the bond when it was, when it was put out, and then this is a, a check some balances to make sure we're actually spending that money. But when it's all finished, the bond money's been expended, and everything's done, you get a final report, and you come up with, "Well, this wasn't done," or "That was, and it wasn't in the bond." Then, then where are we? Is that part of their final, is there a final audit that comes out?
Yeah, they, they will issue a final report, um, and the, what was submitted to the voters was really a large laundry list of, of, "Here's different ways that we could potentially spend that money." So rather than going through and saying, "Well, you did this and you did that," it will be more, um, of them saying, within the, the whole focus of, of the projects that you identified, did you spend the, your money on those projects?
In other words, they won't pinpoint one project that we maybe didn't do?
That's correct. They will not.
Any other questions? Hearing none, we need a motion to receive and approve the 2010, 2011 Measure S, Measure T Annual Audit Report.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. None opposed, motion carries. M-35, District Improvement Year Three, Overview of Corrective Action.
Deven, I'd like to give you a quick update of some recent action taken by the state of California, um, and resulting in some action that we're going to have to take, balance in this school year and next year. Has to do with the district's status in program improvement under the No Child Left Behind Act. We are now, and I think I made this, um, statement to you at the beginning of the school year with an overview of our status with test score results, that we are now a district in year three of program improvement. And in the state of California, all districts that enter year three of program improvement are required to undergo corrective action by the state of California. In, uh, November of, uh, 2011, the State Board of Education took action on fifty-five school districts like ours that entered year three of program improvement and assigned corrective action number six. Uh, what that, and then you've got a copy of that in your packet. Um, the federal legislation, No Child Left Behind, gives the states throughout the country the authority to take a variety of actions when, when school districts continue to not meet their adequate yearly progress goals. Some of them could be even state takeover of a district or schools. Some of them could be removal of, of personnel, but the least intrusive is, is corrective action six, the one that they have selected. And I want to, um, review with you some of the requirements that corrective action six places upon the district. Additionally, we were awarded a hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant, um, as required by law, uh, fifty thousand dollars for each of the schools in our district that's in program improvement. On page sixty-eight of your packet, you'll see corrective action six, and I want to highlight just a few of the key points there. On, on the first page, item number one, it says, "Assign corrective action six to each of the fifty-five LEAs." And for each of those bullet points, I've underlined key phrases. The first bullet is, "Implement a standards-based and standards-aligned curriculum." The second bullet, "Provide appropriate professional development, concentrating on materials-based professional development." Meaning, once we adopt, the state board adopted curriculum material for core curriculum, we need to make sure that we provide professional development for teachers on using the standards-aligned core curriculum. The third bullet is, and this is, this is new, "Professional development related to the common core state standards." Now, you may have heard about the common core state standards that have been adopted by the Governors Association nationwide, and the state of California added several standards to the, to the National Common Core. And they are available now, and they're, the state is asking school districts to begin to take a look at the standards, begin to, to see how we can make a transition from the current standards to the new standards. But the key is going to be actually three years from now, in the year 2014, 15, that's three years out. That'll be the first year of the new assessments that will assess students' skills based upon the new common core standards. So we have three more years of the California Standards Test, the one that we're familiar with. The state of California gave the Educational Testing Service Company, they're the, the company that runs the CS- that runs the CST, they gave them a one-year extension so that it would take them all the way to the end of 2013-14. And then in 2014-15, there will be a new assessment system based upon the common core state standards. So, we have three years to gear up and get ready. Our curriculum, our instructional practice, as well as the technology needed in the district to operate the new assessment system. Because the assessment system is going to be a computer-based assessment system. And so, we've got a few years to plan for that and to budget for that. So, that's coming. And they're asking us to begin, taking steps now, begin professional development. This, okay, the next bullet is, "To ensure full implementation of the nine essential program components for instructional success at the school level." You've probably heard me talk about this a number of times over the past few years. It is the essential program components is the framework that I have used for organizing the curriculum, for providing professional development, for the leadership at our schools. And each of the principals at the school sites use a tool called the Academic Program Survey to measure the extent of implementation of these essential program components. We have been doing that already. And here, the state is essentially saying that we need to continue to do that. The last bullet on that page is, "To target the instructional needs of students not meeting proficiency targets. Through interventions at all levels, strategic intervention, intensive intervention, differentiated instruction in the classroom, various types of intervention after school that we need to be focused on as well." On the next page, page 69 in your packet, again, I just want to highlight some of the key features. Number four, in the middle of the page, they are requiring us to revise our LEA plan. LEA is Local Educational Agency. The LEA plan, which was developed, I believe, in 2008, was it? Was revised. Of course, it was developed for the first, when No Child Left Behind came into effect in 2002, we had, and then usually in 2003, districts wrote their LEA plans for the first time. I believe it was revised here in 2008. And we are required to revise it again. And they provided a rubric for guiding us to how they want it to look and what it should emphasize. And in doing so, they're asking us to make use of the state tools that are provided. One of them is called a District Assistance Survey, DAS. And the other that I mentioned are school site surveys, the Academic Program Survey. I've already begun working with cabinet, working with principals, working with curriculum committee to use these tools to prioritize our needs in the district for improving achievement. And we will continue to do so throughout the rest of January and through February. At the bottom of the page there, it begins a timeline that goes over on the next page. March 10th, we are to submit our revised LEA plan. That gives us a rather short turnaround time, but I think we can pull it off. And the state then is going to review and comment and give us feedback. Then in April, we bring the final LEA plan to the school board for approval and then submit that to the state. And then we're required to implement that, of course, for the balance of this year and all of next year. The funds, the award of $150,000 is designed to help us to do these things that the state's requiring us to do for the balance of this year and through the end of next school year. Is that $150,000 at one time? At one time. On the next page in your packet, or two pages, there's a very simple timeline that gives you an idea of how the work is going to unfold, give or take a week or two, give or take a meeting or two. I've already made a revision to this, but generally speaking, you can see that cabinet is involved, principals are involved, curriculum committee, the district advisory committee, parents that VN meets with once a month, principals and cabinet meets with this group once a month. D-LAC is the District English Learner Advisory Committee. On the second page, again, you see district advisory committee, principals and cabinet with a deadline to submit the draft to the Department of Ed in March 12th. And finally, on the last page is a little chart that comes off of a PowerPoint slide from the state of California where they advise us to form a district leadership team. And what I would like to do is, after we have our plan drafted and we are also required to seek input from a technical assistance provider, in other words, an external agency whose job it is to provide consultation and advice to school districts. So, they're supposed to give us feedback on our LEA plan during the month of February. And so, after we make the revisions, after it goes to the state board, after it's finally approved in April, then when we implement, I'd like to revisit this little chart here and suggest that a leadership team somewhat like this would be the group responsible for monitoring our implementation of that plan. Questions?
Okay, we're going to adjourn to continue our close session where we will be discussing item C3. Are there any public comments on that close session item? Hearing none, open session is adjourned. We will reconvene after the close session.
To report out for?
To report out.